Good evening, welcome to May 8th, 2018. City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor President Augry?
Present.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman LaCaro?
Here.
Councilman Allen?
Here.
A invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. Councilman LaCaro?
Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand to set aside our own personal agendas to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for support. It's always here. Thank you. They want you for it.
Council, approval of the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
I'll support.
Any dissension? Hearing none. We have an agenda. Civic announcements, anyone out in the audience have any civic announcements? Please come up to the podium. We have Commissioner Helene Zach.
Good evening, everybody. Helene Zach, your county commissioner. First of all, I do want to let you know that our Oakland County DNA lab is finally live and this is a big deal for our own prosecution, law enforcement, so forth. Historically, we had to use the state DNA lab, which was so far behind. So now we have our own and we are finally licensed, approved, and so forth. It was...
Commissioner Zach, this is a big deal. I want to thank you for your support for that. You were a strong supporter of establishing a county DNA lab and that will help make the residents of Hazel Park safer and it will help expedite our police department's operations. Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. I'd love to take full credit, but it was a collective effort, but it was really years in the making. I do want to thank the mayor and city manager for supporting the Smart Millage that is coming before the voters in August. And it will be a one-mill ask to support our local bus service. And it will be phrased as a renewal and an increase. And let me explain why. It was originally approved as a one-mill, but with the headly rollback, it went back to 9.9863 because of the rollback of tax dollars. But now we're asking for one, you know? And they, Smart does need that and they are using it to improve technology, the buses, things like that, is what I'm told. 911 surcharge. Again, a big thing of what we do here is public safety and we have to, the Board of Commissioners has to approve the rate going before people on their telephone lines. And we've slowly been increasing the rate because we're in the process of changing from the old copper landlines to the new technology of ESINET. And this is going to require all-new equipment, transition. And so we were this year paying 32 cents per line and it's going up to 36 cents per line. And this is transitional. We hope to retrieve some money back from the state, but we have to get started and we don't know. In any case, that's what we voted to approve. Want to remind people, through SEMCOG, there is an app, the Southeast Michigan Park Finder app. So you can load that and find a whole network of all the county here on metro, local parks, all-in-one app telling you what types of services. I did have a meeting today with the RTA and some others to learn more about the plan. I know that some of my member communities that I represent have been somewhat lukewarm with the existing plan because there was a lot of money invested and about 10 years of planning for the Woodward Avenue corridor that included in the 2016 plan, Bus Rapid Transit. And the new plan, that has been omitted and some other planning that was done. So I had the opportunity to meet with some representatives from RTA. And I'm very sensitive to more tax, you know, asking anybody for a millage. But what I did hear, which is interesting, they're finally hearing the business community that we can't keep going to the voters for mills to run our cities. And I'm preaching to the choir. So there's actually hope that we will have an opportunity to vote for this starter millage to get transit going and that we can look at really working in the Constitution and revising some funding mechanisms. There seems to be more interest in that from the business community, which we'll see. I'm looking at... But some of the things about the new plan is that the goal is that to have more service across the region and to get things going faster. Part of the infrastructure piece of the 2016 plan, people complained and said, okay, I'm scheduled to go online in 2020 or 2024, you know, without investing in some of the BRT, things like that, they can actually start going much faster. There's a lot of flexibility in the new plan and there's going to be a lot more communication and individual community, in working with communities. And so I really like that, that they'll come and work with Hazel Park and say what we can do. Looking at the frequency of buses, I know that nine-mile corridor here is a big deal, you know, John R., and really going for the 15-minute intervals. And then, you know, so I see a lot, you know, some positive things about this plan that I hadn't seen before. So that's it for today. Any questions for me?
Not yet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other civic announcements from the audience? Okay. Take us to the council. Any civic announcements from council?
May 12th is Rock the Park. It is a benefit fund, a benefit for the Hazel Park Arts Council. It will be in the building next to BDT's as well as the lot behind. There will be, Mark Herminski will be our featured artist as well as approximately 20 local vendors, some food trucks. There will be four bands, one of which is a children's band. So this is a family-friendly event. Bring your kids out, come check out some of the art. You can do some shopping. It's just before Mother's Day, so maybe you can pick up something for your mother at the event as well. So hopefully we see everybody there and it runs from noon to 9:00 PM. Again, that's May 12th for Rock the Park.
Councilperson Holland?
Got two events to announce, same day, Saturday, May 12th, but in the morning and early afternoon, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Earth Awareness Day is going to be held at the DPW. And there's also an opportunity for folks to volunteer with the rec. department to clean up their favorite or most park that needs the most work. We're going to have park cleanup. Hot dogs will be served at the DPW. Animal control will be there. And last year, we planted, we used the composting from all of the residents and planted flowers. This year, in keeping with the animal control theme, we're planting cat grass. So you'll be able to take something home for your cats or the neighbor's cats or the stray cats. Also, May 17th, which is a Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, the Hazel Park Historical Museum will be open for our regular hours. We've acquired some new items, well, old items, from the Hazel Park racetrack. There's some really beautiful pictures and a couple of benches and it's been hard to get in and get anything, but we've been making every effort to acquire some new items. And the last remaining phone booth in the city has been relocated from Bray's and should be at the museum very shortly. So thank you very much.
Any other council members?
Just really briefly to supplement Councilwoman Holland's statement, some folks from DPW and Waterspoke with the track today and any other memorabilia that we might want first dibs on, we can get.
Barn doors, we would love to put some barn wood in the museum. And I'd like some dirt from the finish line.
I'll see what I can do.
I'd like to get a bar of that.
Thank you.
For the record, we have acquired a phone booth from Bray's as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Administration, civic comments? Anything?
No, I think that everybody's covered it, but I will, just to say that it is, spring has sprung and the weather is nice now, thankfully. We waited a long time for it, but a message for bicyclists, please be aware, motorists be aware of bicyclists, bicyclists be aware that you're supposed to obey the same traffic laws as a motor vehicle when you're around the street and that's where you're supposed to be operating the bicycle unless you're a little kid. So I did observe a bicyclist moving eastbound on Woodward Heights and she was at the right hand of the lane and it was so nice. And then I watched her blow right through the red light at Batel and almost get creamed. So please do obey traffic signals on a bicycle. That's my only... And Memorial Day weekend is coming up, so I know we've got another meeting before then, but I want to get that on everybody's calendars. That is one of our most, I think that's obviously our biggest event that we run every year. And if you've never been, it's a great deal of fun. Also, we're looking for more people to participate in the parade. So if you have a civic group, please consider participating in the parade. We've gone back, we've emailed and we've contacted and we've sent letters out and we've made phone calls to different groups that have been in the parade for the past three years. So please consider joining the parade. It's very important that we have a great parade, but this parade will only be as successful as the community supports it. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the civic announcements and we open up for public discussion. Anyone from the audience want to come up to the podium and speak? I got a paper here from Jesse Robertson about garbage. I think we all have similar complaint.
Hello, I'm Jesse Robertson. I live over...
Chris, thank you.
Sorry about that. I live over at 23353 Hoover Avenue. And as you mentioned, it's a subject I think we're all a bit more familiar with than we'd care to be. Long story short, that our, whoever, the people who are taking care of our garbage pickup currently are not doing the job we'd like. And I was actually given a unfortunate reminder of this yesterday where it took, it took until about 7:30 in the evening to actually get the garbage taken up where I am on Hoover Avenue. And I do not remember the exact ordinance, but I think isn't, aren't we supposed to like pull in our empty bins before that time? Okay, my apologies.
24 hours.
Okay. Well, apparently the company is taking advantage of that.
Yeah. Utilizing every hour they have in the day.
So I thought I'd bring it up to, just as a, hopefully it doesn't become a monthly reminder.
Yeah, I think that our, all of us have had comments to our administration and Councilman LaCaro is going to sem, Sakura tomorrow to voice our concerns. He sits on the board over there and I think they're going to get it earful, I hope.
I have voiced the concerns before. I emailed Jeff McKean, the general manager, this morning about the situation. Now, this wasn't, this seems to have been a combination of some breakdowns of vehicles and extra-large amount of yard waste. We know we're not the only city that the trucks were out until 7:00 or 8:00, 9:00 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'm not going to excuse GFL here. They should have had their ducks in a row and some more resources. But I will say that it's not uncommon to Hazel Park. We know that other cities in the area were also late on Monday night. We know that Madison Heights didn't finish up until after 9:00 as well. We know that Berkeley on Friday had a particularly, you know, long time, they didn't finish on time. And Royal Oak didn't finish on time either yesterday. So again, apparently inordinate amount of yard waste and truck breakdowns contributed to what was hopefully a unique and one-day isolated incident. But nonetheless, we will strongly convey our displeasure to Sakura and let GFL know that they need, I know, Andy's, Andy's been practicing his speech, so...
Jesse have his comment here.
I actually had a question. Does GFL take care of our yard waste? Because, okay, so, because I noticed that the yard waste I had was actually taken care of in the morning. But, so I had an...
Different, different trucks for different, they have a different cycling truck and yard waste. I did text Ed and he will tell you, whenever it's past like 2:00 o'clock, I'm like, where are the garbage trucks? Where are they? And at 6:15 last night, I was like, hey, none of Hoover or Hayes has been picked up. I don't know about other blocks, but those are the two I know of. And he immediately texts back and said they're on, they're one street over. So it's frustrating to all of us and we definitely appreciate you bringing it up.
Everyone at this table was on a group text last night dealing with garbage, all night. So again, Melissa Schwartz actually went and sent me pictures. She drove up and down almost every street in Hazel Park. And thankfully, most of the streets were actually done before 5:00 o'clock, but there were a few isolated areas due to a truck breakdown. And again, the inordinate amount of yard waste that were late. So hopefully it's just an isolated incident. We know that GFL has been put on notice, that we were not particularly pleased with their services. Since we put them on notice, we have noticed a significant decline in the number of complaints that we are receiving and that's a positive thing. But there's always room for improvement and I think yesterday was evidence of that. So while there were some mitigating circumstances, we still want them to know that we were displeased and we expect them to do a little better in the future.
I'm aware that they, that they were put on notice before from, I don't remember whether it was last month or the month before's meeting.
All of the months.
It's been pretty bad.
Yeah. I did not take the opportunity to drive around and see what the rest of the city was looking like.
Show you Melissa's pictures.
Okay. So I...
Most of them, most of the city was gone.
So I did not have much context. I just knew that my particular street got the short end of the stick at the very least. So...
I live on Harding. Mine didn't, Harding, Hoover and Cousins were not picked up until late.
I'm the winner. 8:53.
It's almost like...
Mine was all done by 4:00 o'clock.
Anyways, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much and hopefully you'll be able to get through to them.
Hopefully we can get something resolved. Anyone else from the audience? Close this public discussion. I believe we can all talk trash later under new business if we'd like.
Pun intended?
No, pun intended, yes. Anyways, takes us down to consent agenda. What's the flavor for the consent agenda, council?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor, of items 1 through 8.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, do we have anyone here for the business license? Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Sit at us coffee. Come on up and introduce yourself and tell us about your business.
Hi, my name is Jessica Bracker. We've been living here in Hazel Park for about roughly 10 years. So my husband has been a home coffee roaster for about the same amount of time. And it's kind of been a dream of ours to open a coffee shop and so far, things have worked out really well. So we're really excited to get started and selling coffee and teas and...
Where are you located?
We are located at, on 96, East 9 Mile, right next to the Hungry Howies. It's going to be a family-run operation.
All about the, what's the hours?
Probably around 6:00 AM to 8:00 or 9:00, I think, for right now. We'll see how things go, maybe push it back a little bit later. I know sometimes people like to study late. I know, taking my own kids.
So your business is going to be coffee only or do you have some tea?
Coffee, teas, loose-leaf teas specifically. We are actually using a local coffee roaster, which is Detroit Bold. So we're really excited about that as well, so. And hopefully some pastries and some other little things. We'll have iced and...
Have Wi-Fi and all that for everybody. Wants to sit around and just have a good time.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is, is we want people to come in and sit.
That's great.
Talk and communicate and just really be...
And buy coffee?
Yes.
Buy lots of coffee.
Yes.
Don't forget the buying coffee part.
Really good coffee.
Wonderful.
I, I'm excited. I'm a tea drinker and I've already had somebody tell me that they've, you've got loose-leaf teas in there, so I'm going to be in soon.
I am very excited about loose-leaf teas as well because I, as well as being a coffee drinker, I am, I like my tea as well, so.
Welcome.
All right, thank you.
Welcome, Jessica.
We're hoping to open May 21st, so that is, that's the goal right now. So as long as, we still have to have our health inspector supposed to come back out and as long as she approves us, then, all right, thank you so much.
Do you have any intentions for maybe utilizing some of that space for some outdoor seating? The small area on the side there?
It's kind of a small area, so...
I'm thinking off to the side.
Well, we were hope, we were thinking about maybe doing some off to the side. There is a couple of power lines, so I didn't know if there would be any issues with that or...
Well, I'm sure you, as you grow, you'll, you'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Or like I had to, but wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? A dissension? We have a consent agenda approved. Administrative reports. Item 1, consideration of medical marijuana secure transportation facility, application 37.
Mr. Mayor, we have consideration for you for two secure transporter facilities. Both of these facilities have, we're recommending for approval. There are some planning issues that will need to be corrected by them before licensure, but the administration is recommending approval of applications 37 and 38 for...
At this time, we're on application 37, item 1. Do we have a vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the application, MML, at number 37. But there was, there's a number of deficiencies in the plan that need to be done. Can we incorporate these deficiencies?
Those deficiencies will need to be corrected or if they reach agreement to modify a solution to those deficiencies by the city attorney and the planning department.
I mean, there's a lot...
There's a lot and there's a lot in both of them.
No way are we putting up with a 10-foot...
Barbed wire.
No, absolutely not. We've already informed the applicant that the barbed wire, casualty, there are many casualties from the plan.
A little bit different color instead of a big brown building.
Well, I think that's part of our ordinance, wasn't it?
States in one part of it, barbed wire, but then in another part of the site plan, it states that it's going to be a iron gate that's going to be put there. Of course, can't be barbed wire. Iron would look very nice there.
We don't allow barbed wire in Hazel Park without extraordinary circumstances.
But there are, there are substantial changes that'll have to be made.
These are substantial. This is a substantial list on both of these applications.
Right. And the site plan will have to be then returned to the city for consideration and approval. No license will be issued until the site plan has been approved.
And he's going to change some of the facade of the building? Like, we're not going to have the big brown barn?
We don't want that.
Okay, I thought we talked about that and we originally drafted everything.
Yes, he has to comply with the requirements of the ordinance you passed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were enforcing that.
Absolutely, there's a lot of...
As we went through all that work for nothing, I hope not, so...
Yeah, the way, the way it looks now, they, they've eliminated a lot of the windows and doors already and it's looking kind of bunkerish, so it's going to need some color and sprucing up because it's not attractive at all.
Any other, I have a second on with the, you're adding this memorandum to that? Do I have a support with that memorandum attached?
Support.
Do I have any dissension, any discussion more on this? Any dissension? Seeing none. Item 37 passes. Item 2, administrative reports, consideration of the medical marijuana secure transport application 38. Administration, same property, pretty much?
Same thing. We're recommending approval contingent upon compliance with all of the planning recommendations.
Do we want to, any have, have a motion for this, please?
I'll move approval of the application, MML, application number 38.
A, any support?
With the, with the list of revised...
Especially the washroom.
Yeah, it needs a restroom, I think.
Anyway, do I have a support on that?
Support.
Do I have any dissension? Discussion? Item 2 passes. Board's commissions, do we have any that we want to put on or talk about?
The administration has no recommendations at this time.
All right, tabled items, leave it on there? Do you have any?
Leave it on there because we're still waiting for a proposal for them. Hopefully we will get...
Tell them to get going.
For the next meeting. The next meeting will be in two weeks, so.
It's been a couple of months. Anyways, new business, let's talk trash. Okay, since we want to go there. Anyone else have any more discussion to take down the trash? Thinking, I think Councilman LaCaro should have it underhand.
He has it, he, I'm sure. I spoke with Tom Jones, who's our alternate today as well. They, I've talked to both of them. They actually both brought it up to me. They know they need to raise this issue tomorrow and they will do so and hopefully Sakura will, which is the actual employer of GFL. Hopefully Sakura will impress upon GFL the importance of stepping up their game here a little bit. But the last time we did do that, there was improvement, so...
There was improvement, yeah. I give them that for at least a week.
This, this may have been, you know...
Sorry. It's just been so bad. I mean, every other week, it's something new.
It does appear that way.
Councilperson, you have a comment?
Yeah. I noticed, and I, I think you pulled it behind me the same time, I noticed that longevity testing facility, it, it looked open the other day. Is, is that something that we've already approved or...
Yes, we've already approved that. I think the individual was here before you and even spoke. I didn't, I was, I pulled up too because I didn't remember what it was either, but it, yeah. He's the gentleman here. I think he had a beard. I think he spoke right in public discussion and discussed with you that he is a testing facility and he's a local guy and he's interested in people utilizing his facility, so...
Okay, but that wasn't a medical marijuana?
No, nothing to do with medical marijuana.
Councilmember Augry?
He's substance abuse and counseling.
That one, it slipped my mind and it caught me off-guard.
Like blood and urine testing. So, no, he's not, because you, I thought the... Then I remembered, okay, we did, yep.
Yeah. Any other new business from the council? Administration, have any new business? Seeing none. Communications from department heads? Any communications from department heads? Chief Bukos?
Bukos is approaching the podium.
Nice to see you here.
I was just going to bring up some public safety thoughts regarding the nice weather. City manager covered the bike part I was going to talk about.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. There's a few other things. Basically, if people are walking and running, that kind of thing, if they have their cellphones and earbuds in, I suggest leaving one out so you can hear people around you. Also, if you're walking, watch what you're doing on your cell phone. You're also not aware of what's going around, so just be aware of what's going on around you. Protect your items. Not everybody's a criminal out there, but if you see somebody that you don't know, cover your items. Don't have it out here for them to grab. Just make yourself, don't let yourself be a victim. Another thing, if you're shopping, a lot of people like to leave their purse in the shopping cart and then walk away from it. That's a very easy way to say bye-bye to your purse. If you can condense your stuff into your pockets while you're shopping and leave your purse hidden in the trunk or in your car, that'd be good, too. Just be aware of your surroundings and look out for others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, communications from the city attorney.
We have published the notice with regard to grass and weeds, so I want to remind everybody that they cannot have their grass higher than eight inches. Please keep it cut. Also, when it's nice weather, we want you to clean up your yards. We do not want to have to come by and issue citations. We would rather come by and issue our congratulations on having a nice lawn and a nice piece of property and keeping it maintained. Waiting for the day when we don't have to send code enforcement by to do anything but admire all the yards out there and not have to issue citations. We have a lot of them on the docket coming this Thursday and it's way... coming this Thursday, and it's way too many. So, please, if you need to help your neighbors clean up their yards, do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing. Thank you. Thank you.
Any comments?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. There are two attorneys here. Just wanted to make sure. Anyways, it takes us to the city manager. Would you have comments this evening?
You know, just to tell mayor and council, Jeff Campbell and Tom Jones and I had a chance to travel to Madison Heights and visit with a business that they have over there that's doing some extraordinary things and some extraordinary research in terms of pothole patching. So, they're gonna be bringing some of that technology here to Hazel Park, and we will try to see if some of that will have some value for Michigan's road system. What we saw today was absolutely impressive. I mean, look, I'm a... I'm a dark, and so things like that, you know, new technologies excite me. But this was actually really cool, the way that they added things to the aggregate, and it sealed very quickly, and it was... It's a quantum leap in pothole patching technology, so we hope to bring that here to Hazel Park, so...
Fast effectiveness?
Well, right now, he wants to... He says he's gonna do a few of them for nothing, because he's got to test his product. He needs a place to test it, so...
Do we have a few potholes he can use?
We have a few.
Pick a row.
One or two.
We have a few. And again, to report to our residents, we obviously know that there are problems with John Aron with Nine Mile. And again, we have, for the record, because we were not at the special meeting on TV, because we were in the other room, because of the planning commission conflict, but we have received approval from the federal government to receive over $900,000 for the repairs to Nine Mile. But unfortunately, that is not until a future fiscal year. I can't remember if it was '21 or '23. So, we do have that money, so we're currently looking at a way to utilize that sooner on a... I can't remember what it's called, a pay-forward situation, and working with MDOT to do that. So, it's kind of delayed our plans a little bit to issue the bond to redo John Aron and Nine Mile. So council's gonna have to make a decision on, you know, are we gonna go with one bond to cover everything? Are we going to go with two bonds, which will increase our cost? So, we'll be bringing you a couple of different proposals to look at.
Next meeting?
At the next meeting.
Did the... Did this product you were looking at work equally as well on concrete and asphalt?
He has two different products. It's what I would like to do, and again, I don't know that any of you are gonna be as excited about it as I was, because Jeff and I have frequently talked. What we need to do is find a mad scientist who will invent a better pothole patch. Well, I think we found one, and he's over in Madison Heights, and I was excited to see the demonstration. So, if he's willing, I'd like to set up something with the city council to go and see this product, because this really is, I think, a huge improvement over what municipalities and what road commissions and what the Department of Transportation are using to patch potholes now, so...
Set it up. Let's see if we can get a date together.
Really cool.
That sounds like it. Let's see if we can get a date together and go from there.
Especially since he's willing to use this as a little bit of a guinea pig to try out the new technology here. I think that's a good thing, so... And beyond that, I just wanted to remind each and every one of you, echoing what Helene Zach said, remember, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. And I'm glad to see that there's some discussions from the business community, that they realize that you can't keep this dog, and you're going to have to make some changes, or else the state will not make it through the next recession. So, that's my two cents today. Spring has sprung. It's a Sunday day. We can maybe be out of here quickly and enjoy the sunshine.
Counselperson, Alyssa Sullivan.
Amy already spoke about our... Amy spoke about the fundraiser. They rock the park coming up on the 12th. Just a reminder, please come out, support your local artists, support local business, and support your local nonprofits. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Excited to have coffee. You're like kitty corner across from my street. I could walk there. So excited. Please have matcha chai tea. Thank you. And everybody, drive and ride safe and be aware. Look out for more foot traffic, people walking their dogs, people riding bikes. I've seen a lot of close calls lately, so please be safe. And motorcycles. Watch out for motorcycles.
Counselperson Holland.
I would echo the staying safe. Between the potholes and the bad drivers, it's not safe to ride a bike or a bicycle lately. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and folks hopefully are watching at home. We seem to be having some issues with cable again. It's just a dark screen most of the time, so hopefully this one will air on YouTube, so folks that aren't able to come out can still follow what's going on and be involved. Hope to see everyone out on Earth Awareness Day. It's a good opportunity to partner with other civic and social and service groups and help clean up our parks. You can pick your favorite park, and again, like I said earlier, the park that needs the most work. And Tom Jones will be at the grill back at the DPW. He has a hot dog grilling machine, and they're really good. Thank you again for coming out. Y'all have a good evening.
Yeah, this is... Thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman. This is a fun event, and anybody who can, please try on Saturday morning to come out and help clean up our parks. Also, I forgot to mention this, but we are hiring part-time seasonal labors at DPW, okay? So if anybody's interested in a job cutting grass and working with our DPW and doing things like that, please contact them at 248-542-0340, and go over there and obtain an application. You can also fill out an application online on the city's website.
Councilman Lakiro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to invite everybody again out to the Memorial Day festivities and remind everybody about watching out for us bicyclists. And the bicyclists, I thought you were gonna hit this, Ed. If you're riding around at night, it's a law in Michigan to have lights on. You... And I recall, I didn't ride some years back, and I almost hit somebody coming around a turn in the side street, because they didn't have lights on. And my headlights don't turn the corner before, like on some cars. So, I've wore... I have a light. They're sixty-five bucks. It's kind of pretty cheap if you save your life. And I want to welcome the new coffee shop, the tea shop. How was that pronounced? Savitas?
Savitas, okay.
All right. I'm a tea drinker as well, so I'll be by. Thanks. Have a great night, everybody.
Counselperson Aubrey.
I also want to echo sentiments. Excited about loose tea. Not a coffee drinker, but definitely excited about the tea. And as I've already mentioned to the owner, I'm looking forward to the addition of smoothies, because more than tea, I love smoothies. Also, coming up is Mother's Day, so I want to wish everybody Happy Mother's Day.
Man, you turned us off.
Sorry. On behalf of everybody at this table, we all wish...
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thanks for covering our butts.
Happy Mother's Day.
We all suck. Thank you.
And also adding to the bicycle comments, please also wear a helmet. Helmets save lives. I've literally seen this happen. Saved my brother's life. You know, when you see a helmet split in half instead of a skull, it is a much, much better thing. Please wear helmets. Please get the bike lights. You can actually even get some for cheaper. If you Google, there's events. If you're low income, you can get bike lights and safety equipment for very low cost. Make sure you are wearing them. Your children have all of this on them, because as it gets warmer, this weather is beautiful. More people are gonna be out. Please be aware. If there's a bike lane, please feel free to use the bike lane. That's what they are there for. We would love to see more people using the bike lanes. We've got our new Sheroes on Overd Heights, and that... That's all I have.
Okay. Again, Happy Mother's Day to every mother out there, from all of us up here in city council. I just wanted to make sure that we all don't feel so bad here. We could all say we wish our mothers a happy day, because it's the most important thing in the day in the year, really.
I don't have a child, so I'm troubled.
Anyway, I'd like to say thank you for coming out. Welcome. Your coffee shop is a welcome, and I'm sure all of us will be there one time or another. And I also want to say that we are trying to facilitate some road repairs one way or another here, and so we don't have to go down these terrible roads anymore. The trash is a whole nother ongoing saga, and hopefully we can come to some kind of resolution with the trash hauler and find a... Maybe they should hire some more employees or whatever their problem is. I don't know. But we would like... We're trying to provide the best service possible for our residents, and that's what our goal is. And we're residents here as well, and we don't like to be treated that way either. Keep an eye on your yards. Keep them clean. We're out doing road repairs. All those water main breaks we had, we're filling them in all over the place. Be cautious again of the bike riders. And I do want to bring up one thing. I am not dying, okay? People think I'm dying. I'm not dying. People have been asking, Mike, you okay? You okay? I had a minor heart surgery back a few weeks ago. I'm doing just fine. I'm going through treatment. I'm sure Ms. Klobuchar's been through the same thing. A few of us have had those minor little glitches in our lives, and we're doing just fine. Thank you again for coming out, and we're enjoying having a good time up here as city council and representing you as residents. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Thank you.